Order. Um, we'll start, we have two agenda items tonight. One, a briefing from the Jason Lee renaming committee in addition to an update on student and student safety. So we'll start um with the agenda item number 2.1, proposal to rename Jason Lee Middle School.
Thank you. Good evening to the distinguished members of the school board, to our Bobcat family, alumni, community partners, and friends throughout the city. Kim and I consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to present to you this evening our proposal for the renaming of Jason Lee Middle School. Next slide.
Is there PowerPoint?
Pause for just a moment to make sure we get that up, at least for the Yes. But
Jason Lee Middle School. Okay.
And just while we're waiting for that, um, I want to provide a little bit of context on this. Um, as many of the community members who might be watching may know, at our last meeting, we took a vote and took action to approve a recommendation that came before us to consider renaming of Wilson High School. At the same time that the request came forward from the community to consider renaming Wilson High School, we got a similar request related to Jason Lee Middle School. So while the conversation about Wilson has been more active in the last couple of months and more front and center, this conversation and this work to pull together committee and to solicit input on the recommendation related to Jason Lee had also been happening. So both of these have been months-long processes that both have occurred in line with our policy on school naming and renaming. So we just decided as a board to take these actions in sequence and to review the recommendations and in one at a time so that we could give them all the full attention. So now, given that we've wrapped up the process of evaluating the recommendation for Wilson, we want to turn back to the process of evaluating the recommendation for Jason Lee. So I want to turn it back to you, Mr. Knuckles, and welcome you, Ms. Messersmith.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Go back to the previous slide if you would, please. Thank you. Right there. Okay, Kim?
Okay. Um, for those of you that don't know me, um, good evening. My name is Kim Messersmith. I'm currently the principal at um Stewart Middle School, but I'm here as a collaborator with Principal Knuckles and other members of the committee. Um, to introduce our Jason Lee Middle School renaming proposal, I just want to um tell a little history about Jason Lee um in our community, and it was the former campus of the College of Puget Sound at one point, and was the first middle school in Tacoma in 1923, and it was known as West Intermediate School until it was renamed Jason Lee Middle School.
Next slide. So the area where Jason Lee Middle School is located is on traditional Pu'ala land. Once it was discovered that Jason Lee Middle School was named after the first Protestant Christian missionary who established Indian boarding schools and believed in the oppression of indigenous people, here's what a group of concerned citizens had to say, and I quote, "Having a school in the area that is named after a person that was part of a cultural genocide of Native cultures is a harmful reminder of all that was taken from them," in the quote. Thank you. Next slide. So our Jason Lee renaming process, community members wrote to the school board explaining the background around the name Jason Lee and its impact that it had on Native Americans in the Northwest. So a call of action was established by community members, and the superintendent began the process of a school rename committee under district policy 697. Principals at Jason Lee opened an invite to a renaming committee in September. It was open to students, alumni, staff, parents, community members, and members of the Pu'ala Tribe. In September, the committee met with introduction and purpose and established that we needed more community members on the committee. We, we wanted to be well-rounded in terms of the different um e- equity. Uh, in September also, we added some new members. In the month of October and November, we built a survey that was sent out twice to ask questions of students, staff, and alumni, community, and parents. In November and December, we gathered and analyzed data and feedback. In December, we narrowed the suggestion of 10 for discussion to a committee, and in December and January, we narrowed it to the top four to bring back to Jason Lee's staff and students. In January, the committee made two final suggestions, and also in January, we sent those two suggestions to the superintendent. February, we brought it back to the superintendent. In February, we continued discussion and bring final, the two final suggestions back to Jason Lee and the staff and to continue to seek input from the families. As far as next step, we are excited about the next phase of this project, whatever that entails. We would definitely be sure to include all of our stakeholders. Next slide.
Yep. I'm sorry, it's a little slower on my side. Okay, so um when we, um, one of the pieces of data we wanted to pull was after we narrowed it down to get some input from Student Voice, and so our staff at Jason Lee built some advisory lessons to teach the student population about what was going on and some of the choices that were out there, and um they had, the top four choices are listed as follows, and um their first choice were in these order at the time. Um, I don't think it was 100% of the student body, but it was a very high percentage of the students and staff put together. Next slide. And the survey that was sent out to the community over the course of two months, um, if you could see right here, the gr- the, let's look at the one on the right, the map of Tacoma. We wanted to gather where res- where responses were coming from as far as area code, um, and so we wanted to see to make sure we got a good response from the area that surrounds Jason Lee, and then of course letting every voice around Tacoma be heard. And you can see the majority of responses were around the 407, 406, and 405 area, which does surround the Jason Lee Hill community. Um, the answers that we received from all respondents or, um, and we divided it between three categories, all respondents, um, people of color, and white, to make sure that we were hearing voices equitably, and um very few percentage wanted to talk about it in the future just because of the pandemic. Um, 29% want, did not want to change, but an overwhelming 67, and then if you look at the division of the two um ethnicity groups, um 73 and 75%. So it was a more overwhelmingly supermajority um group that said yes. So we continued the process. The more data that we collected, next slide. I have to wait to see it, sorry. There we go. Um, we wanted to know, we wanted to make sure that we had um different varying age groups from the community and from the schools, whether they were kids that were going to come into Jason Lee, or kids from other elementary schools, to Jason Lee students, to alumni, to community members, or even families, parents around the area. You can see we had um a cross-section of age groups, um probably the smallest around the alumni, the kid, students that may be starting work, career, or college. Um, we also wanted to see how they were related to Jason Lee Middle School, so you can see um parents of Tacoma Public Schools, students, uh was the overwhelming, overwhelmingly majority. We had several community members, we included the Pu'ala Tribal Membership as much as we could, the Hilltop Community, including churches, service group, centers, Peace Community Center, and other student um venue areas to gather their input. And then when we broke it down by ethnicity, you can see the um numbers there. It is overwhelmingly Caucasian. Um, we did put it out twice to gather more, um, to see if we get a bigger cross-section, which there are high numbers in other areas, just not as high as the Caucasian, but again, it was an overwhelmingly amount of people that wanted to say yes and do the change. And then when you look at gender, it was um mostly female, and there, that were, prefer not to say, or non-binary, and then male. Next slide.
So I wanted to point out that a lot of these surveys were co- conducted via school messenger, emails, and through the uh our P- Jason Lee PTA General Staff Meeting. Uh, the Hilltop area is uh thriving, is a, a pillar uh in uh Tacoma, Washington. When the committee got together and we were talking about uh several names, initially it was just Hilltop Middle School, and then we started to look at all of the legends and all of those folks who have had some influence on um the Hilltop area, so we thought about the name Hilltop Heritage Middle School. The Hilltop Community has a rich and unique history that speaks to the diversity and inclusiveness of people from various backgrounds. Despite its social, economic, and racial struggles, the Hilltop Community continues to thrive despite what seems like insurmountable odds. This is just a quote um that came up as a result of the, our committee mi- uh meeting as a possible model for Hilltop Heritage Middle School. It's a place where you enter to learn and exit to leave. Next slide.
And then our second um si- uh recommendation to the board and the superintendent was a um, I don't know if it's a unanimous, but a group decision that came from the Pu'ala Tribe. When we asked for their input, we asked about people, um, people names that would represent our community, or different um language terms that could represent our area, and they came back with this recommendation. So I will read it because I want to read their words. Um, Sha'kali'ch, up on top, pronounced Sha'kali'ch. With input from the tribe's historic preservation, culture, and language departments, the official recommendation from the Pu'ala Tribe is to honor the rich and diversity history, diverse history of the Hilltop neighborhood. Hilltop has a unique history that speaks to the diversity and often shared struggle of Tacoma's residents of color. The tribe recommends using the Leshutseed word for "up on top" or "high up on top", Sha'kali'ch. And it was also mentioned in conversation and discussion that the Tacoma City Council's working with the Pu'ala Tribe to restore uh many of the Leshutseed words that are around our community, including street names, possible um discussion around those, and that they had um trust in our community that we could learn this word together.
I think there's a video presentation.
Oh, yep. And then if we could show the video, which kind of has some pieces from Mr. Knuckles and from Charlotte Bash of the Pu'ala Tribe.
The video is coming right up. Hi, I'm Michael Knuckles, interim principal of Jason Lee Middle School. Jason Lee Middle School, formerly known as West Intermediate School, was constructed in 1924 through 1925. It was created on the former campus of the College of Puget Sound at Sixth Avenue and North Sprague Avenue in Tacoma, Washington. The school, for decades, has been a fixture of the Hilltop community, the city's first neighborhood, and its first immigrant neighborhood. Overlooking Commisment Bay in downtown, the Hilltop has always been a racially diverse home to mostly working-class community members. Jason Lee Middle School sits on the ancestral land of the Pu'ala Tribe. The Pu'ala people have lived in the Tacoma area and beyond since time immemorial. After the 1855 Treaty War and the signing of the Medicine Creek Treaty, Native people were forced to live on the Pu'ala Reservation, clearing the way for European settlement. Jason Lee was named after the first Protestant Christian missionary in the Pacific Northwest who arrived at Fort Vancouver in 1834 and was the first to establish Indian boarding schools. Sadly, these Indian boarding schools were equivalent to cultural genocide, a planned and organized killing of a group of people and/or a culture of activities that did not conform to the destroyer's belief. It's recorded that Jason Lee believed all Native Americans had to be assimilated into Christianity, put children into schools away from their families, took away their clothing and made them dress European style, cut off their hair, and forbid them for, for speaking their native language. Having learned about the despicable actions of Jason Lee, a local citizen set forth an appeal for the name of Jason Lee Middle School. A citizen who requested a name change stated that when we honor Jason Lee, who established and ran Indian boarding schools, we perpetuate the trauma inflicted on young people in the 19th century, and we honor, if not celebrate, the legacy of these notorious and culturally genocidal institutions. Many other citizens agreed. So, Jason Lee Renaming Committee was formed. That included alumni, parents, students, teachers, and community members. After conducting several surveys, the following names were submitted as replacement of Jason Lee Middle School. Hilltop Heritage Middle School, Sha'kali'ch Middle School, Paramos Middle School, Insta College Hilltop Heritage Middle School. Forty-five point four percent of Jason Lee's staff and students voted Hilltop Heritage Middle School as its top choice.
Ha'lsla'chel, Charlotte Bash's seed stat, Pu'ala pab's ched, yaf ti' klatzep nehalem. Uyayus chen, t'ot ti' l'lo'ob ati' shp'ala pab's. Good day. My name is Charlotte Bash. I am Pu'ala'f en klatzep nehalem, and I work for the Pu'ala Tribe's Historic Preservation Department. I am speaking my native language, Leshutseed, which is spoken by tribes throughout the Northwest, specifically around the Puget Sound region. I've had the honor of serving on the renaming committee for Jason Lee Middle School as a representative of the Pu'ala Tribe. As we all know, Tacoma Public Schools sit on the ancestral lands of the Pu'ala people. The surveys we conducted showed overwhelming support and initiative to use the renaming of Jason Lee as an opportunity to uplift Native communities that continue to call Tacoma and Hilltop home. Some suggested naming the school after a Native role model, but overwhelmingly, we saw a call for recognition of the land and the place. After meeting with directors from historic, culture, and language departments at the tribe, the official recommendation from the Pu'ala Tribe is to honor the rich and diverse history of the Hilltop neighborhood. Hilltop has a unique history that speaks to the diversity and often shared struggle of Tacoma's residents of color. There's no better way to lift up these stories and the story of the community and its residents than by naming the school after them. The tribe, however, recommends using the Leshutseed word for "up on top" or "high up top," Sha'kali'ch. This could stand alone or accompany the name Hilltop. So I know that the Leshutseed alphabet looks intimidating, but we have faith in the passion to learn of our Hilltop and Tacoma community. A simple pronunciation key could be used on the website or in any transition documents. So I want to walk through the pronunciation for you all so you know what we're saying and how to say it. We have the word Sha'kali'ch, or "up on top." That first letter you see is called an S wedge. In English, we might spell this out as SH. It makes the sound shh, as if you are shushing someone. Shh. Then we have a schwa, which looks like an upside-down E. This is pronounced uh, as in UH. And then there's a Q, which is similar to a K, but a little bit farther back in the throat. Then next, the ALI are pronounced just like they are in English. And then we have a C wedge, which in English we might spell out as CH, or ch, as in chick. Ch. When you put it together, the closest we can actually spell it out in Eng- with English characters is Sha'kali'ch. All together, I hope you're saying it with me. Sha'kali'ch. Sha'kali'ch. Good. Ha'ls, we say, are good. Sha'kali'ch. The Leshutseed language, as I said, is spoken by tribes throughout the Puget Sound region. The language went through many years of dormancy. Our elders were taught not to speak their language, and were often beaten by teachers in the Indian boarding school system whenever they'd use Leshutseed. The fact that we still have our language today is a testament to the resiliency of our people. In recent years, the number of Leshutseed speakers has grown exponentially. Preliminary results in an ongoing survey conducted by the Pu'ala Tribal Language Department shows over 200 language speakers. However, we estimate that this number is closer to 500. You can already see Leshutseed throughout the region, and the city of Tacoma is starting the process of renaming downtown streets in Leshutseed. By renaming the school Sha'kali'ch Middle School, Tacoma School District and the Hilltop Neighborhood will be part of the movement to return Leshutseed to the land and community. It's been an absolute honor to work alongside my fellow community members on this committee. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Hoyt, I see you later.
The Hilltop community has a rich and unique history It's a dotted replay, yeah. ... diversity and inclusiveness of people from various backgrounds. Despite its social, economic, and racial struggles, the Hilltop It's, it's a dotted replay. We can, uh ... thrive despite what seems like insurmountable odds. Throughout its Yeah, thank you. So, on behalf of the uh Jason Lee Renaming Committee, and uh Kim, for your uh unrelenting service and working with us, we appreciate you, and of course, we appreciate the board for giving us the opportunity to present this platform tonight, so thank you all so much.
President Cobb, just adding a little bit of context for the board and, and the public right here. So tonight, we're not taking any actions. This is a, an update of where we are in our process. Um, and so we wanted to, to bring that to you, and obviously to the community, very similar to what we did in the Wilson naming process. And so, you know, as a formal next step, the um, as it was mentioned in one of the earlier next slides, or early slides, we'll be continuing to collect feedback, and then we will be bringing you a formal recommendation uh to that place. But if we welcome any feedback the board members have now, uh, as the initial reactions, if they choose to, or like I said, we will be bringing back a formal recommendation at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Knuckles, Ms. Messersmith. I want to open up to questions or comments from the board. Um, I'll start with Director Bonbright, or Vice President Bonbright. Any questions?
Well, I want to, I want to really thank um Principal Knuckles and um Principal Messersmith for um cheer, you know, sort of leading this, this conversation with the community. Um, it obviously was um an engaged process, and it sounds like there were a lot of community, a lot of community input, so I appreciate hearing that. Um, obviously, there seemed to be um good reasons for, for both of the, of the choices that are put forward, and I was um thrilled to hear uh from the Pu'ala Tribe as to why and, and, and what they thought was um, wa- was a good name, and um I think it makes a lot of sense, they both do. So we'll be waiting to hear from the superintendent what her recommendation is, and then having a further discussion, I'm sure, but I, I just want to thank everyone that was involved. I know this can be highly emotional to rename a school, and um I, I think you guys have done a great job of, of putting forth the reasons why it's important to do so at this time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Keating, any comments?
Um, yeah, I'd echo what Vice President Bonbright said. Um, and also, I'm really grateful to um Charlotte Bash for the, I really appreciated um walking us through the language and pronunciation, and the his, like, that was really um pro- provided a really rich understanding um of the history, and so I just want to just um extend my congratulations, or not, my thanks for that. Um, Sha'kali'ch, uh, I will continue to practice uh to say that uh correctly, so um, and then the other thing I would just wanted to, um, as um an LGBTQIA youth advocate, I want to thank you for including non-binary um in the graphics, um, and it not only um honors people in um, uh, students that at Jason Lee, but also in the community, it also honors Two Spirit um for indigenous cultures, so I just want to say thank you for um that acknowledgement in your presentation.
You're welcome.
Dr. Strozer, any comments or questions?
Uh, no questions. Just want to say thank you uh both for, for leading the charge and doing this hard work, stepping up to do the hard work. Learn something new every day, Sha'kali'ch. I'm be practicing that, and actually looking a little bit more into the language. I appreciate you guys for bringing it up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Leon?
Uh, thank you for the whole committee's um hard work in evaluating this, um getting input from the community and parents, um stakeholders. I think it's important that the whole community, even if the ones that didn't participate in the survey, know that there was a, a strong look and a reaching out to get uh thoughts and evaluate from um current Jason Lee Committee and the, the outside um Tacoma Committee, so specifically also uh the Pu'ala uh Tribe, and uh, and to have their input is extremely important, specifically what uh the current name of the school is, um, and why the reasons are that we're thinking of changing it. Uh, so, um, I do think uh all the options would, would be excellent. Um, Mr. Moss has been a big, great leader in the, in the Tacoma-Hilltop uh region for a long time, too. That's in the top two or n- um, or other, other names, um, so, I think whatever the recommendation comes to us, we can evaluate that later. Um, it would be, I think, uh, you know, a combination of names, even if an official name ha- happens to be on there, this, a secondary name could potentially be uh placed, you know, maybe outside, and maybe not uh on every piece of article of clothing, if it ends up being a, a larger name, some people may have trouble with that. That's, that's a small problem to have, really, when it comes to really thinking about the importance and the deep meaning of, of what we um want to acknowledge as the um problems we've had in our history and ways to improve it into the future. Thank you.
Um, Dr. Garcia, I see your hands. I do have a couple of questions. Do you want to go first? Do you want me to? Okay, I'll go with my questions first, or comment. I just, to appreciate the work that you all put into leading this process, and I really want to appreciate, or thank you for um, starting with the history of the names of the building. I thought that was a really good way to set context, and I hope that both in this process and in the way that we implement the change for Wilson, we model this level of, like, you probably had to do some research to find these changes, like, I hope that we model, like, being more transparent and documenting it in the place, the history of the names. And so I'm wondering with um the research that you did to get to these um former names, do you know when the name was changed to Jason Lee? It says it was First Intermediate, um, First Intermediate School in 1923, and then formerly known as the First Intermediate School, and its name was West, but do you know when the shift to Jason Lee happened?
I would You would think I would, go ahead, Knuckles. Um, I looked into it, it read, read it, but I don't have it memorized. I have to go look back at my papers and things like that, but um, I don't remember. I can update you with that later.
From what you do remember, even not having a date, do you remember if there, there was any documentation about the rationale at the time, and where it came from, the, the move to Jason Lee?
No, um, Kim, I'll take this. Within our research, we were putting uh this, this information together, we know that uh Jason Lee landed somewhere in the Portland, Oregon area. How it came to be that uh this particular site was named after Jason Lee, we have not been able to find uh any kind of information that would lead us to why it was named uh Jason Lee.
Okay, okay. And I'm wondering
1924 was when the date
Thank you.
When it was changed to Jason Lee?
Uh, I did a quick Google search for us, uh, the school is named after notable missionary parent in, in uh Jason Lee at 1924.
Okay. I see that it was
It had been
Intermediate. I see the, from the slide that it says 1923, so I'm wondering if the West Intermediate name just got ascribed to that 1924 establishment? Uh, and I only ask it because I'm wondering if, um, because it was named West, I'm wondering if the addition of Hunt Middle School or any of the other, or expansion of middle schools triggered a name because it was no longer truly West or something like that, but at any rate, I think the point I'm trying to make is, I think it would be great in whatever decision we land on, whether to act on the recommendations or not, and whether to name it one or the two, um, that we keep track of it for history, so it's clear why we made this statement moving forward. Um, the other things, um, I just, I'm curious about at this stage in the process, is just, ultimately, I know that you will come to us with a, or the superintendent will put forth like the final recommendation to us, but I just want to offer that I, I personally, I don't know how others feel, I really love the attention to the, the know how others feel, I really love the attention to the, the references to heritage and One Option. I love the attention to the history of the Puyallup Tribe in this area and reference to Shakalich, I have to practice, too. And in general, I love both, both of what that word means in the Leshutseed language. And I love, like, the motto that you offered up around enter to learn, exit to lead. So, in all of it, I think you've been really thoughtful about the symbolism and the, the meaning of all the names and all of the references you brought forward. So, hope that none of the, none of that gets lost in the final recommendation, that whatever you come to finally speaks to all of that sentiment. And I, and I know I'm speaking in, in terms, like, as if we've already made a decision to act and we haven't, but reflecting on what you put forward, these are the things that resonate with me and what I hope doesn't get lost in your final recommendation. Dr. Garcia?
Yeah, I just want to remind folks that no finals decisions have been made. And so, I know that sometimes we feel like these things hit us in the community for the first time. This, both of these schools' namings have been in process since July. They were featured in King Five News in July. And so, I want to thank both Mr. Knuckles and Ms. Messersmith for their leadership. But I also want to let folks know that if they have feedback, positive, other suggestions, please email Mr. Knuckles at Jason Lee Middle School and for your suggestions. And then we can take that information back to the committee for one final round and say, is there anything that we've learned that would cause us to fine tune our, our comments, our adjustments and our recommendation prior to that? So, we'll also be putting out some kind of notice to the community to let them know where we are in the process. But we anticipate we'll be back in, in later this spring with a final recommendation based off of this good work.
And Dr. Garcia, Director Cobb, I just want to thank the community because we had, I mean, a ton of suggestions and recommendations and thoughts. It wasn't always like a name, but thoughts around how we should approach or what we should think about when brainstorming different names. So, I appreciate the community and all of their thinking. So, someone, yeah, like Dr. Garcia said, we're, we're open-minded.
My last comment would be is that folks may ask, well, why is this one different than this one? Each one of these were representative of their school communities. And so, they looked at it from their schools and their school community's identity and what their recommendations. And so, that was very important to us is to, to reach out to those school communities and, and lead that process. So, thank you very much for your time. We'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
So, with that, we will move on to item number two, point, is it 2.2? I'm going off, 2.2, safety and security.
So, President Cobb, we're just, a quick reminder, we're going to have Deputy Counsel Malik Benrow join us and some other staff. And as you know, very similar to the previous topic, you folks have been very active and engaging and based on community feedback around what does student safety look like? And you have done several conversations in the community and explored several different opportunities. And so, Mr. Benrow is going to take us through the review of that process and what does that look like. Mr. Knuckles, if you could do me a huge favor and just mute, I think we're getting some background from you. Thank you. And so, I will turn it over to Mr. Benrow and he can take us and give us an update on where we are and what are some potential next steps.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Like Dr. Garcia said, my name is Malik Benrow, in-house counsel for the school district. I'm joined with my colleague from Human Resources, Dr. Forrest Greek. Just like Dr. Garcia said, here to give a brief staff-side update on the student safety conversation the board's been having over the last several months. We'll start by sort of helping to frame this discussion for members of the public who may be joining this conversation for the first time, who may be initially joined to hear about and share their thoughts on the Jason Lee renaming project. Here's how this came about, how we're here today, given a study session on, on student safety. This process started from input received by community, actually similar to the Jason Lee renaming project. Community and stakeholders raised concerns and issues, some expressed support for the district's School Resource Officer Program. And the next slide, we'll be able to get into a little more detail about what that is for folk that are not immediately familiar with, with what the SRO program is. And so, what the board directed staff to do was go ahead and take a look at what our community's experience has been with the school district's School Resource Officer Program. Might as well say it here at the early outset, a School Resource Officer Program in Washington State is a partnership between a school district and a police department where uniformed, typically uniformed, commissioned police officers come into school buildings, very often secondary high school buildings, and provide the sort of police services in those buildings to support the safety of schools. And so, at the board's direction, we sent out a survey to really see what staff, students, parents, and community members, see what their experience with that SRO program has been historically. And if they had any recommendations or thoughts about it, we got really, a lot of folk, thousands and thousands of respondents to that survey. And when we analyzed and broke down the data, what we were able to find is there really is a wide, varied opinion on this issue. We had a number of respondents that were in favor of keeping the SRO program, a number of respondents that had asked us to find a way to do security without having SROs specifically. And so, at the board's direction, what we did is we connected further with community members and community groups that had really taken this issue on as an issue that was important to them. We connected with groups of students and staff. We met with the police department, the TPD, to sort of discuss these concerns and take a look at one of the law changes that would sort of come into place that would also impact the SRO program. As we sort of approach where we are today, we, the COVID closure in March of last year really sent students home to work remotely. And as students went home to work remotely, the officers that were in the SRO program returned to their typical patrol and community safety duty with the police department. And they've been there since. And so, as we start to think about bringing back more and more students for in-person learning, we've been getting questions about what does the SRO program look like as students come back? And so, that's what we're here to discuss today. So, that's the study session, where, where we are now and what's going to be to come. Hoping to flesh out some of these ideas. I understand board members want to sort of update the public with their position and their thoughts and their feelings on the program and maybe give a sense of what's to come. Dr. Greek is going to, sort of, by way of providing some further context for this discussion, we realized, both in the survey results and in the continued feedback we have received since the survey results, we realized that there isn't a widespread, crystal-clear understanding of the admittedly somewhat complicated security apparatus at the school district. We understand that sometimes parents and students may see somebody serving in a, in a security capacity and not have clarity on what exactly is the role of this person I'm looking at? Is that a police officer that works for the department, for the police department? Or is that somebody that works for the, the school district? So, we put this slide together hopefully to clear up some of that misconception and give a broader sense of, of the staff that work for us in various security capacities. So, Dr. Greek is going to walk us through this a little bit.
All right. Thank you, Malik. You know, through the first slide, that really there's a kind of a three-part breakdown of the security team. And so, Tacomah Public Schools employs campus security officers or CSOs and school patrol officers or SPOs. Both of those are under the same collective bargaining agreement and they're currently active in patrol assignments currently right now as we're in this kind of hybrid model. They actively work with students, they have to work, actively work in the schools. Our school patrol officers in particular are in vehicles and patrol our various campuses across the district. So, those two particular groups are kind of like that first layer that are directly connected to, to TPS. That third and last layer is school resource officers. And the biggest difference is they do not have a collective bargaining agreement with us. We have a contract between TPS and TPD. And Tacomah Police Officers, officers are commissioned officers. TP, excuse me, Tacomah Public Schools, school patrol, school patrol officers and campus security officers are not commissioned officers. And that really is the biggest difference. Hence, the separation between a collective bargaining agreement and really the contract that exists between TPD, Tacoma Police Department, and the school district. And that's really important to designate between those, those two different kind of groups. Because in, as you know, Malik had pointed out, our community often gets the three confused and particularly the SPOs and SROs are often mistaken as one and the same and they're, they are completely different. That being said, they're, you know, both integral in the part of providing some security to our schools and support to our students.
Yeah, and I'll add as a, as a quick note, like Dr. Greek said, our, you know, historical of the last five years' use of SROs governed by contract. So, that contract started in 2016, expires in 2021. One difference also that I would point out is our SCSOs are currently active in their building assignments. So, we know that we have, you know, small groups of students that are in our schools, groups of students that are planning to come back in person in the hybrid model. The CSOs continue to serve actively in those building assignments, even where there may be very few students in that building on a day-to-day basis. The same can be said for our school patrol officers. So, the folk that Dr. Greek mentioned, you know, typically in patrol cars, they're also currently active in their patrol assignment, even with, you know, smaller numbers of students in, in physical buildings. The difference comes with the SROs. So, this is again a contract for services between the district, between the police department. And when the school closure was ordered by the governor in March of 2020 and students were forced to work from home, work remotely, that, that sort of, you know, allowed the Tacoma Police Department to take those officers, who would otherwise have been assigned in our schools with students, to return to police duty. So, those officers are not currently in our schools. They were assigned to each of our five comprehensive high schools last year and for previous years under this contract, and they have not been back in our buildings since that school closure in March. We also haven't paid out on the contract between TPS and TPD since March. And as an important note here, we anticipate that if high schoolers return for hybrid learning, be it two days a week, half the students maybe two days a week, half the students maybe two other days a week, if the numbers allow that, we anticipate that our SROs would still have to be in their community safety positions where they have been for the last year. So, that, that's what we anticipate would occur should high schoolers, should high schoolers return. I wanted to add one other slide to maybe provide some further clarity for folk at home who just drive home this idea that, you know, we have different groups of staff that, that focus on different things. Here we have sort of a breakdown of the general duties of each of these three security roles. This is taken from either the job description that Forrest's team was able to get me or for services in the case of an SRO. So, campus security officer, again, assigned to individual schools. We have 23 of these folk right now. Our director of security, Mike Gruber, tells me there are a couple others that are working on onboarding to get to full, full staff. Their duties include, not limited to, but include promoting safety, promoting, you know, proper conduct and behavior, monitoring hallways and the grounds, responding to safety concerns that get reported on campus, and maintaining some relationships with student staff and parents. Our school patrol officers, like Dr. Greek said, are usually patrolling. So, monitoring the premises, the area around the schools, doing security checks at points of entry, assisting onsite security when, when a call for backup is, is made, responding to calls in a mobile capacity when security concerns arise, then maintaining their security vehicle. Again, both those functions come right from the, right from the job description. And then lastly, this is pulled from the contract between the district and the police department. School resource officers, like Dr. Greek said, commissioned officers, do the primary contact between local schools and local law enforcement. They insert compliance with laws and ordinances. They foster activities to increase understanding of law enforcement functions. And they assist more generally in strategies to improve school safety. So, just to drive home the idea that, you know, like, like we said, a three-layered security approach at this time. And we understand that, like, as Dr. Greek said and like Dr. Garcia said, got a lot of feedback from community about if this is a system that we keep it the same going forward or do we look at some changes that are going to occur? And I understand that we have, you know, board members that would like to weigh in, give some thought, engage in some discussion about this and kind of shed some light on the, on the way to go from here. I'll remind folk, you've heard it already, this is a study session, so there's no decisions up or down that'll be made here, but this gives the board the opportunity to update the public, let folk know where they're thinking and where we think we might be going in the future. And if there's questions for myself or Dr. Greek, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Malik. I see a hand from Vice President Bonbright, so I'll go ahead and start with you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I wanted to clarify a couple of things, Malik, that you said and then I, I thought was maybe, it sounded like you maybe said the opposite. So, I want to just clarify that the, currently, the contract we have since last March, when they actually returned to, to work within this police department and stopped coming because our schools were closed, we have not, as you said, those, those officers, those police officers are back in the community doing policing, you know, as for the police department, we have not been paying for their services because they haven't been providing them. And then at the end, when you were talking about when students come back, here at the bottom, it says we're not anticipating that they would resume their responsibilities. But I know that you said that they're back in community doing their work and I just wanted folks to be clear that it's not the school community, they're back in the larger community and that when kids, when students come back to the high schools, we're not anticipating that the SROs, the police officers would, would come back. Is that what I heard you say correctly?
Yes, and I'll apologize if I wasn't crystal clear on that. So, when I say return to community safety, as we mentioned, the SROs aren't employees of the school district, they're employees of the police department. And so, under the contract, what the police department essentially did is say, you know, you continue to be a uniformed police officer as part of TPD, but your sort of assigned area of work is, you know, at the, the local high school. And then in March of 2020, when the governor closed schools for in-person learnings, there was no, there were no students at the school. So, SROs, who continue to be employed by that Tacoma Police Department, were reassigned to community safety rotations that don't include being at those schools. So, they're still employed, not by us, but by the police department, serving in like a non-school safety capacity. And the note at the bottom is from conversations we had with TPD that, you know, these are six officers who they've sort of incorporated into community safety. So, if high schoolers are eventually able to come back in person for some number of days, those six officers are out in the community. You can see how it would create, you know, potentially sort of a back, a need to backfill or a staffing perhaps shortage. Six officers were then put back in schools after having been on community safety rotation for about a year. So, our understanding at this time is that they would continue in community safety and not be in the high schools should small numbers of high schoolers come back in person.
Okay, thank you. And then the other point of clarification that I didn't hear and maybe I just missed it, a big difference, and I think in terms especially about appearance as other, as, as other component of the roles that they play, is that the school resource officers being licensed, and you call them commissioned, police officers, when I'm not sure everybody understands what that means, but these are the ones, they actually carry a weapon and they're in full police guard uniform and drive Tacoma Police Department vehicles, correct? And then the, whereas the SPOs, the, the school patrol officers who are employed by Tacoma Public Schools do not wear police uniforms, they have, I, I believe it's, you know, polos that, you know, have some, or I don't know what, I'm actually, would love to know what, how differentiate the physical appearance of these folks, but they're not, they don't carry, no one other than a commissioned police officer carries a weapon. So, neither the school patrol officers nor the campus security have weapons of any kind, correct?
That is, that is correct. I think, you know, just to, for full, you know, full transparency, school patrol officers and the school resource officers do look similar in initial appearance in their uniforms and their dress, but they are different in a very small ways. In particular, the bat, you know, the, the insignias obviously on their uniforms and the patches on their uniforms are different. They are, you know, there is a difference between the TPD and then Tacoma Public Schools. And, but initial kind of, and hence the reason I think Malik had kind of led with, you know, our community has been, in some ways, sometimes they, they look at one and believe that it is a police officer room, really they are Tacoma Public Schools SPO. And that's chiefly because of, of that uniform is very, is very similar. I will say the same thing about the, the cars are very similar as well. That's since, has changed in slight ways, most recently in the last year. But there is, there is that difference still that does exist between the two.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll save my comment. Okay, thank you very much. Um, I'll I'll save my comments for later.
I think there's one other subtlety. When you use the term weapon, we're talking about a a gun. So the SROs are the only ones that carry a a firearm. And so I think there could be an interpretation of weapons by several different folks in there. So I just want to add that caveat.
Thank you, Dr. Bond Bright. Um, if you have additional comments or questions, I think you can ask them now, and then we'll go around to everybody else. I know you want to save time for others too, but I don't want you to feel to feel like you have to hold. Okay, okay, I'll move on.
That's okay. I'll just, I'll listen to other folks and then say something.
Okay, Director Leon, any comments or questions about the presentation?
Uh, yes, um, more comments than anything else. Um, one question, I have to answer two, um, but the community may not know this. Just the the split of campus security officers, there's two of those at each uh high school and one at each middle school, is my understanding. And then the school patrol officers um aren't assigned to one school, but rotate uh throughout whole district, I believe. Uh, and then the SROs are assigned to one high school in addition to their supervisor, just as background for the community. But I I like to say, you know, our current um and previous SRO, the current ones, well, not current, but the ones that we had before the pandemic and the ones before that, um, all really have served the students in positive and supportive manner since we've had this relationship with um TPD and police. So I really appreciate um those officers, their support of our students um and TPD for the relationship um that we've had for for many years. I don't know how many years it's been, but it's been multiple years now. Um, but I do, I do know we've heard um very significant uh amount of people in the community uh in our surveys and um emails and voicemails and in the community when we've um been out uh that have concerns about just the uh the practice of policing in general, not just in the school, but the way in which uh BIPOC and people of color, uh not always people of color, it can be uh non-people of color also. Sometimes people that are experiencing poverty. Um, all those other folks, whenever we're talking about school kids at this point, uh, but the way in which some have been treated, these departments in general across our nation. Um, and at that, while we we've had recent, you know, two large profile issues here in the in the Tacoma uh area, um, with the the vehicle issue um that happened downtown several weeks ago. Um, and then the Maniella's um death that happened a year ago now. Um, those are significant issues that um have the community worried and um feeling threatened when they see a police officer. Not everyone feels threatened, majority don't, but a lot of people do feel threatened. Um, and some people have been targeted um over many years uh by police departments. So I think that that is where a lot of this background comes from. And I just want to, I want to call out what we've heard from the community uh and this real feeling that exists. Um, and that um overall nationally, the statistics show that um the school resource officers um have not um overall have not decreased um the the amount of kids that are going down the pipeline to criminal justice system, but have actually in many places increased that. Um, inadvertently, probably not intentionally, uh, but it has caused uh kids that have had interactions with them uh to be escalated as opposed to be de-escalated. Um, I don't think that that's been a significant issue here, but we don't have um, we don't have significant numbers or data, I think, to prove that just uh over a short number of years in Tacoma. I think that is, that's what the studies show. And the other thing is that um uh by average, by um, not average, but uh nationally in our, in our country, it's about one in one million chance that there's going to be a a kid killed by a um by a shooter in a school. That's a very tiny percentage. We know that it happens, and it happens way too frequently in this country. Um, but that's one of the original reasons why SROs um uh began in our, in our country to keep kids safe from other shooters. So I know that that's a sensitive topic, um, and an emotional topic for the community uh to think about. So I'll pause there too and see if I want to come back with more comments.
Thank you. Director Keating, any comments or questions?
Um, I just had a question that I had, actually Vice President Bond Bright asked um some, the same clarifying questions that I had. Um, and so when we talk about the S, the CSOs and the SPOs and their contract, um, it's been a five-years' contract previously. And what, um, and I just want to um, just with clear, be clear, what is the length of contract that we're looking at currently moving forward beyond? Is that, is has, has that been determined?
No, Lisa. So you're, you're referring to the collective bargaining agreement that we, that exists, correct? Yeah, so we won't determine that until we engage in a full bargain come uh likely starting this March. Um, there's no, no way to tell where that will land. You know, we, we always hope for two or more years. Um, but um right now, we don't know that until we, we begin bargaining with it, with that labor group.
Thank you.
And just for the the public out there, we, we typically would, you know, we wouldn't move into any uh deeper conversations around contracts in this setting in there. So Director Keating's is more of a holistic of what is the timeframe of the current contract in there and when is the process? So um, that's, that's where we would typically leave this.
Thank you.
Director Schrodger, any comments or questions?
Yeah, just one quick question or or just opportunity for clarification for the public since we displayed this chart of how many officers um that we have spread throughout our district. Uh, when you look at the list, you see a lot of them. So if if someone could do me a favor for the public, clarify uh the reasoning behind the choice of this type of staff staffing model, you know, with CSO, SPO, and SRO.
Yeah, I'm happy to share with you generally my understanding, and then I can circle with our Director of Security, Mike Rupert, um, and send you some details about, you know, why this specific model was chosen. But um as you saw sort of in the last slide, you know, you're looking at um different general responsibilities for different groups, right? So you have the CSO, the campus security, who is sort of stationed, assigned to that building, to a building. But you can see that um, you know, there are some sort of security concerns that that model wouldn't sort of address entirely. So if a, so if a CSO, for example, is in the building, providing for the safety and security of students and staff in that building, um, that same person isn't going to be able to respond down the street to, you know, a a security issue that might happen in the central administrative building or that might happen at some other location. So um, you know, different security staff with different roles allows sort of, you know, a holistic ta- approach to security because you have, you know, some folks with the cars that can be mobile, have some folks that are there at the school and they're staying there at the school. Um, and then the, you know, SRO choice is, you know, more to provide sort of um, you know, additional sort of community safety um sort of support. We haven't always had SROs. Um, there have been years in Tacoma where we had them, there have been years we haven't had them. Um, and so we sort of, you know, have to be flexible and adapt uh depending on whatever the model looks like to make sure we've got that good coverage across the board.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I'll offer um just a few um reflections. One, when I reflect on even the topic of this presentation item, it's, I think it was safety and security or something like that. I can't see my agenda right in front of me. But I just think moving forward, and it it's really helpful to have this conversation as explicitly about the different role types that we have and the roles that they're they're um called to play. I think it's helpful to have that level of clarity about the roles as we talk about the framing for this work. Because historically, up until when we decided to change the strategic benchmark goal language, say, health and safety, we framed that as safety, and that was really just discipline benchmarks. And so I think as we talk about safety and security and safety overall, it's good to have um this clarity about what we mean and who's in, who's involved. And are we talking about just physical security of buildings? Are we talking about um support for um behavior management? Or what are we talking about? So I think that's just helpful to be explicit about the roles and the types. And speaking, like, just as a follow-up to Director Schrodger's comments about the number of people, I'm trying to, like, the acronyms get, we stumble over them all the time when we're having these conversations. So I'm just bucketing these groups in different ways in my mind. And I really think of the SPOs as kind of like asset management. We don't talk about it in that term, but we have a lot of buildings and we have a lot of um facilities and we have a lot of locks and a lot of, a lot of like, um, uh, even on the weekend, I think I sent um um Dr. Garcia a text over a weekend because a neighbor, a friend of mine was a neighbor to DeLong and heard a loud noise at the school. That was not normal noise. And so who's going to be charged with going to check out the loud noise? It's not going to be the principal, it's going to be someone like a SPO. So when we think about all of the different functions of the district, I do think um some of the call-outs of just like the physical security aspect of what we need to, in terms of governors of this district and stewards of all of our resources and these assets, we do feel in my mind, like, we need to have a certain level of sec- of secu- building and physical security that's matched to the value of our physical assets. So I I think about that role needing to be played. Similarly, um, when I think about the um campus safety officers and I think about the role of teachers, um, their primary job is education and support of our students. But as we all know, kids are kids, and there's like developmentally appropriate stuff that happens, like fights. And so do we want a teacher to have to be on deck? Or the principal, for that matter, to have to try to intervene in a typical behavioral thing, like a fight? Like, it happens, and it's predictable kinds of behaviors when you have uh hundreds of teenagers or hundreds of small kids. Um, that's context is a little different, but secondary school context. When you have hundreds of kids together, some things, things happen, and they're not, they're not cause for calling the police, and it's not cause, they're not illegal. There are things that kids do that you don't want to have to charge teachers and and classroom educators always with having to be the ones to respond to. So i- in that regard, I'm trying to bucket like just the reality of schools and all the complexity of the of safety and security and um the different kinds of support needs students have. So it's really though helpful for me to see those bu- bullets because nowhere in there for the SRO category in particular do we expect them to be in the behavior management and discipline context. And I think that makes that really clear in the way that you've outlined um the roles. So that's just my reflections on what you've presented, just some of those things. But just moving forward, um, and looping back, I guess, to my opening comment about reframing safety and security and how we are going forward from a strategic goal standpoint. I know that this presentation isn't really about mental health and student support, but I think there are like adjacent lines to all of these conversations. Like, the physical security of the building is adjacent to the bigger picture of how we think about student and staff safety. And we need to be able to address specific parts of that comprehensive safety plan in, with a focus and in total. Um, so I don't think this conversation needed to be all of that, but I do think that as we keep having this conversation about what kinds of um positions we need, it should be in the context of our kind of holistic view about what we think about safety and security and what needs we have. Lastly, um, I think a lot of this um conversation was um said in the context of just the building and um the regular school day. We did get, begin to hint at like the after-hours needs around securing access and that kind of thing. But I'm just curious about the context of like sport, sporting events and and after-hours kinds of needs. And we didn't really get into that in the bullet points, but it'd be nice to know like who we rely on currently to meet some of those physical safety and security needs or um kind of crowd management needs and how kind of that figures into these different role types currently. And I see Director Bond Bright's hand, so I don't know if anybody wants to answer that or not. Uh, no pressure now.
Yeah.
And then I'll go to Director Bond Bright.
Yeah, often uh some of that physical needs uh related to, um, for instance, um, after-school activities and or like a sporting, a sporting event uh would default to the campus security officer uh assigned to that particular building that is, you know, possibly participating in the athletic event because they're mostly indirectly connected uh with that school and those kids, and they have that relationship. Um, our school patrol officers also provide a layer of of support, you know, if called or when needed. Uh, primarily, there are the after-hours type of um group and support that can be called to let you into a building um to uh maybe have a escort if needed after hours uh for someone that's coming from one building to their car. Um, it's called, very inclusive. One of the things that I think I'd, you know, would either emphasize and point out is that current model, I believe, was um kind of created to provide some flexibility for the various different supports that are needed, both, both uh, you know, physical type of uh support uh to just, you know, daily maintenance, not maintenance, but over overarching supervision of of buildings themselves and in our, in our assets. And so um, you know, hence the reason for the flexibility to pre-able find that support across the district that are various locations.
And then one other aspect of that is we have some really large events, whether they're a uh football game or a basketball game. And there are some requirements uh by the leagues to say, what kind of support and supervision do you need? Not only school staff, but potentially uh there might need to be a police officers o- on those sites. Um, and so that's another layer when you talk about after-school supervision in there. Uh, that doesn't mean that any of these things can't be done in uh um that the model has to remain the same. I just want to say that, but there are, you know, there will be restrictions, uh parameters, if you will, uh circumstances that we're going to have to continue to explore um that are outside variables and inside variables.
Thank you. I'll go back to Vice President Bond Bright and then to Director Keating.
Okay. Um, well, first, I want to, I want to thank the whole uh um TPS team here who's, I think, really done a nice presentation and helped clarify and uh some, it really has been confusing to to think about what are these different roles and what is their purpose. And I also um appreciate President Cobb's comments about um the buckets. And I like the way you were thinking about the assets and protecting the different assets, whether they're the human assets or the the building, the physical assets. And speaking of that, I think, um, you know, if we can take anything out of this, this year um of pandemic where we've, you know, everything's been turned on its head and the students haven't been in the schools, um, but they've been home and and they're and that has been a huge so- social, emotional impact on the students, on the teachers, on the staff, on on the nutrition staff, on the, you know, bus drivers, on everybody involved in in serving our community. Uh, there's been a high stress level this year. And I've, it's, it's made me sort of help rethink kind of how we do all of our supports um and our protection or our um safety and security as well. And and uh Deputy Superintendent Garcia just said the magic phrase that I was going to say is that maybe we, we should take this opportunity in this transformational time to really think about what's in the best interest of um all of the various human and physical assets of Tacoma Public Schools and and rethink this whole um safety and security um framework that we have. And we have an opportunity, I think, we, that if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Malik, but I do believe that the contract we had with Tacoma Public Schools, it was a three-year contract, ends this, this year. I'm not sure if it's June, July, whenever, I think it believes it ends. And so we'd have to be, if we want to think about engaging in a new, in a new way of of um getting maybe um social services or other kinds of services in um as well, it's now's the time to have these conversations. It looks like we're also, if I saw on the, on the slide about the negotiations, Forrest, you were talking about the, with with the union, it's also happening, it's ending in two thousand twenty-one. So it's like we, we have this convergence of opportunity um since we actually have to go start over, both with the employees and with Tacoma Public, um, Tacoma, Tacoma Police Department, we have the opportunity to to be creative and innovative about how we provide these services into the future. So just wanted to put that out there and and um have some of my colleagues or or whomever, you know, respond or um TPS staff, we respond to what's possible.
Let's go to Director Keating, unless, and maybe after Director Keating's um comments, if Forrest or Josh, you have any reactions, let's go to Director Keating.
Um, yeah, there were two things that I wanted, uh, something that um both President Cobb said and Vice President Bond Bright. Um, there were two things that I wanted, something that both President Cobb said and Vice President Bonbright said. We're thinking about Vice President or President Cobb, you were talking about like the building, our actual assets. And I know that I'm thinking about CAB, Central, the Central Administration Building, that we have a pretty, a large community of unhoused folk. And I know that our safety and security staff do a lot of work engaging with those around CAB or on safety. And I know that there have been, you know, some, you know, safety issues of those folks that are unhoused. So I think that, you know, in in looking at what is, what is safety and what is security? And how do we provide that? And to Director, Vice President Bonbright's comments, how, how can we rethink what safety, what does that mean and how do we define it? And and then that made me think of in the presentation, Malik, you mentioned that there was a lot of uncertainty with what, what does an SRO do? And I just, what really stood out to me in a lot of the surveys and the work that you did, Malik, in outreach is how the students, like a significant portion of the students had no idea why they were there. And there was this presumption that, you know, that the presence of a police officer in full uniform, like that, that there was a sense of they were in trouble or potentially going to be getting in trouble. And I think like make, like being clear about what, what does it mean to be safe? And those that are the most impacted and marginalized in experiences with police officers, I think, is a really critical consideration. So, but I, it's just very complicated because, you know, we do have incidences where we need Tacoma Police Department support and help. So I'll just pause there.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or reactions from Josh or Forrest?
I think, you know, there's, there seems to be a general understanding that we need to seize this moment to look at what our opportunities are. So I think what we would ask the board is is to reflect on that over the next few days, a few weeks. Give us some feedback and then we can, you know, then meet with President Cobb, President Bonbright, think about what are some actionable next steps for us.
Thank you. I think that sounds like a good next step. Any other comments?
I would just say, well, last, these are, you know, really heavy topics. They're really important topics for our community and and they are very complex and they are nuanced. You guys have been in several of these. And so, you know, the staff recognize that. I think the general community recognize that is it's, it's a heavy left end. So we're not going to come to a quick, a quick fix in some of these conversations. We're going to have to have these meaningful dialogues and debates. And, and so we recognize that you've been doing this for the last six, seven months, July-ish, maybe even longer than that now. And so we're in a solid place. We have a lot of background knowledge. And so I feel optimistic that we can move forward. So thank you for your leadership in this area.
Thank you. These are heavy topics. I appreciate you saying that. But I think these times of disruption causes, give us an opportunity to look at things differently, to see things differently. When everything's just status quo, you think everything's fine or everything has to be the way it is. And so much of this time over the course of the last year has revealed for us that things don't have to be this way. Even the presentation last week from the member of the Head Start Policy Council reflecting on the benefit of the tablets for just family engagement, that's an innovation that we probably wouldn't have surfaced unless we had to buy tablets for preschoolers. And we probably never would have did that because that's not the model. So I'm just optimistic about where we'll end up landing. As your hand, Director Bonbright, go ahead.
I was just going to add, we're not in this alone either. I mean, it's, it's something that other community partners are struggling with and thinking about how to be creative. And it's one of the things that the JMAC, the Joint Municipal Action Committee, that a group of elected officials are taking on this project over the next six months. And we're looking at health and and safety as as the topic and COVID response. But also, you know, what do we, what do we do about safety around the community? It's, you know, transit buses and in the parks and in schools and what do we do about about all these issues? So I really do think it's an opportunistic moment for us to really rethink and and work with our community partners to try and and design a comprehensive approach to health and safety for our entire community where we leverage each other's skill sets and expertise and even resources to braid together a, a really strong support system. And and I think this is when we have to weave in mental health consultation and all the different components, whether it's homeless, you know, how we're dealing with the homeless population in terms of giving them supports. All this stuff works together. And so I'm, I'm actually really optimistic that we can look at this opportunity and not feel the burden of doing it alone. I think in the past, you know, just feeling like, okay, we're going to have policemen on site at the, you know, comprehensive high schools and that's going to be our statement. Well, you know, it's, we really need to rethink the whole picture along with the city of Tacoma and the, you know, Pierce County and Metro Parks and the port. And, you know, the different players, Pierce Transit, the Health Department, you know, we really are all in this together. And so I think that helps lighten the load a little bit, but it also means we have to engage our community partners in different ways than we have in the past and really sort of nudge everybody up to the starting line on this. Because, you know, you start going down and people go, oh, schools have got this, we don't have to worry. And no, we're going to be linking arms and marching forward together on this. And so I'm pretty optimistic. So thanks again to the staff for all your work. Really, it's, it's really a great foundation of knowledge for the rest for us.
Thanks. Any additional or final comments from the board? Seeing none, those were our agenda items tonight. So I hope you all have a great rest of your evening. And I look forward to seeing you a couple of times next week. But with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.